We'll call to order the regular meeting at Batavia City Council for Monday, June 1st, 2015. Would you all please rise for beef and vocation to be found by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as always, we are thankful for the many blessings that have been showered upon the community of Batavia. We just ask for guidance and understanding and vision as we enact and discuss the various items of business before us. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in honorable defense of our liberties on foreign soils, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of them. Tonight, we just ask for guidance to each member of the council as we go about our deliberations, knowing that in our hearts and minds, each and every one of us is here to do what is in the best interests of our community. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Atech, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, equal to all, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, please call to roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rusado.
Here.
Atech.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Omen.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Alderman.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen elected members of the City Council are present and accounted for for this evening's meetings. We obviously have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda. Do we have anything?
No, I don't, Your Honor.
Anything? Okay, moving to the consent agenda. Alderman Atech is new chairman of governmental...
Have I been appointed officially?
We haven't approved it yet? Okay, then Alderman Stark, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We'll have that motion later in the meeting.
The consent agenda reads as follows: "That we accept in place and file the Committee of the Whole minutes for March 10th, April 21st, April 28th, 2015; the February and March 2015 financials; historic preservation commission minutes for March 23rd, 2015; and the following approvals: May 22nd, 2015 payroll of $730,488.57; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $556,001.88; the City Council minutes for April 20th, 2015; ordinance 15-22-R; amending ordinance 14-73 wages and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees; resolution 15-67-R; approved task force quarter number seven with Trotter and Associates for wastewater treatment plant design; resolution 15-61-R; award of directional boring contract with Park Town Construction for an amount not to exceed $178,795; resolution 14-53-R-K authorizing execution of an amended easement agreement with Bethany Lutheran Church. I move that we place the consent agenda on file as read."
Second. Move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Alderman Brown.
I think unless I heard it wrong, was your item J, did you say 14-53 or 15? It's supposed to be 15.
15-53-R-A.
I don't know. I can't remember.
Any other comments? Clerk call to roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Omen.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
Atech.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. All right, moving then to item number six, which is recognition tonight of the Steel Pythons Robotics Team, and I've asked Alderman Atech if she would be so kind as to do the introduction.
Well, I'm honored and proud to introduce Ron Karabowitz, who is the founder and leader of the Fox Valley Robotics Team that's been running strong for at least ten years and growing every year, and he's taken several of his teams, or several of his teams have qualified for World, and this year, the Steel Pythons qualified for World, and the mayor suggested that they come on down and we recognize them here. It's a great achievement. Come on up. The Steel Pythons and their robots.
Okay, so as was said, we are Team 355, the Steel Pythons, and some of the things that we've done this year is qualified for the state competition where we went on to win the highest award there. Something else that we did was we ended up placing 16th in the world in programming skills, and we went on to the world competition and where we won the Build Award. Aside from our accomplishments as a team, ourselves this year, we are part of a larger organization that was mentioned before that Mr. K over here runs called Fox Valley Robotics. In our organization, we have four divisions. We have Lego Wolves, which is for little kids, which is junior FLL, built with Lego. We have eleven teams, fifty-two members, and our next division is our Lego Dogs Division, which is slightly older for kids, fourth through eighth graders, and they, we have sixteen teams, eighty-four members, part of that, and they compete building Lego robots. And then we have two other divisions of Vex, which is us, we're the seven, and another team, division of FTC, which is similar to this. They have five teams and twenty-four members. In our organization, we have people coming in from twenty-four different towns to help compete and be a part of this, and our organization as a whole has had ten teams from that youngest division qualify for their state. In FTC, one team qualified for state, and us, as we said before, we qualified for state and then went on to compete at our world competition. Additionally, we host five events in a year that bring in about 2,000 people to come and see robotics and watch their people compete. We help out with the Batavia River Cleanup Event on the Fox River, and we also help with the KDOT Highway Cleanup on Randall and Kirk.
All right, so, over the summer, we have several summer camps for middle school and elementary age kids who might be interested in getting a competition, season program, and which we teach them about building and programming and the like. If one would be interested in signing up for this, they would go to foxvalleyrobotics.com. And none of this would be possible if seasoned summer camps, us competing without Mr. K, he's backbone of the organization, has done a fantastic job. And thank you very much. Yeah.
To put this all in perspective, as far as this team is concerned, I'm very proud of them. They graduated last week, okay, so now they're sophomores through seniors, and it just, every time, my first group of kids that graduated from sophomore to juniors, I saw one of the kids pull up in a car, and I was just like floored. And these guys are doing the same thing. They're driving, they're working, and they have time to basically meet to build this robot. But I was going to say, to put this in perspective, there were about 9,000 teams this year that competed at this level of robotics across the world. Ranking number sixteen for programming skills was across the world. Their perseverance was outstanding. They've rebuilt this robot several times, and with the contributions and also the enthusiasm of their parents, which wouldn't be possible without them, this team has flourished. They went down to the world competition, they held their heads high, they competed very well for Fox Valley Robotics and Batavia Robotics, and I'm very proud of them. Every year, we have kids come up through the program, and our youngest kids are first graders, and it just is amazing what these kids are learning. Their school districts, the schools are just phenomenal nowadays. We try to take that one step further, to integrate everything that they learn, show them presentation skills, show them teamwork skills, show them how to be people, and these guys, right in footback, I mean, I've said it to them maybe a couple of times, maybe their parents also, but I am very, very proud of them in terms of what they've accomplished this year and what they will accomplish when they move on from high school into college and so on. A lot of them have said that they want to be engineers and so forth, and that's part of what this program is about, but it's more about being a person, about basically putting your best foot forward, about putting that work effort in. And when they spend six, eight, 10 hours a day, Saturday and Sunday, maybe four or five hours during the week, each night, working on this robot, that's that dedication and enthusiasm that our young people have today, and I'm very proud of it, and you should be very proud of it too, especially the parents that have raised these kids. So, thank you very much, guys, for allowing me to witness this, so, thank you.
Okay, obviously, Batavia and the surrounding area, because not all these gentlemen live right in Batavia, but they're certainly part of a team that's kind of hosted here, and we are extremely proud and, I think, looking forward with to great interest what is going to be produced by these gentlemen in the future as they go forth and do some things that we think will be exciting. I'm going to present to the council a resolution, and we've got copies of this made out to each one of these gentlemen that we'd like to give them, but before we do, I'd like to read it and have the council pass this and officially put this into our minutes. It says, "Whereas, in the name of each one of them, has served with distinction as a member of the Steel Pythons robotic team in competition, competitive contests, in a wide assortment of judge programs and multiple robotic formats, and whereas, with admiration and appreciation, the members of the Batavia City Council join Mayor Shelkey in expressing our congratulations with this certificate to the Steel Python Robotics Team for the outstanding record of success that has been achieved in robotic competition in the 2014-2015 year period. The innovative and visionary designs for application of modern research that has been presented by the Steel Robotics Team represents the forward-thinking talents found within the ranks of this extraordinary group of young people. Our community and the surrounding region take great pride in recognizing the contributions to robotic science that have been generated by this impressive team's efforts. It is with great excitement for further research and creativity by the members of this team that the Batavia City Council officially passes this resolution acknowledging our fond hopes and excitement for the bright future that the work of the Steel Python's robotic team offer to all members of mankind in our future." Approved by the City Council by a vote on June 1st, 2015. I would ask for a motion of approval of this.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Clerk call to roll, please.
Atech.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Omen.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, that's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. And gentlemen, congratulations, and as we've done in the past, anytime we have a group of young people down here, we're very fortunate to have the voice of the Bulldogs as a member of the Batavia City Council. So I've asked him to sing out the names of each one of these gentlemen, and when he does, I'd ask you to come forward and I'll give you your certificate.
Okay, got them all. Sam Atech. Brian Helfrich. Micah Millet. Mark Nami. Evan Pacero. Nick Schuster. And Ben Zinser.
Evan? Oops, sorry about that. Nick? And Ben? And we also have one for Mr. K. So I'd ask you to give me another round of applause, please. You guys go forward and do some great things. Thank you. Right there. Okay, moving to item number seven, which is going to be an announcement about the Batavia Schools Hall of Honorees by Nan Phillips and Joanne Spitz. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Joanne Spitz.
And I'm Nan Phillips.
And we're part of the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence, and we are here to announce the inaugural BPS 101 Hall of Honor inductees. This was started a few years ago when we were trying to think of how to celebrate the 30th anniversary of the Batavia Foundation, and we realized that we were one of the few districts in our area that doesn't have a distinguished alumni award. Nan and I started working on this as part of the foundation with bylaws, nomination form. We formed a committee of fifteen people that included the BPS superintendent, the high school principal, reps from every high school group, five community members, us as the two BF members, foundation members, and one for the BEA member. And Nan is going to tell you a little bit more about the Hall of Honor.
This committee of fifteen people have worked hard to solicit nominations from throughout the community. We gave a lot of presentations last fall, I think one to this assembly, and nominations were due by February 1st. By April 1st, the committee had selected the initial group to be inducted, and since that time, the planning for the celebration has escalated to a fevered pitch. It will take place the week of homecoming, September 13th through the 19th. The honorees will be invited to ride the Batavia Park District Trolley in the Homecoming Parade on Wednesday, September 16th, and then an informal gathering is being planned at the Crosstown Pub. They will be introduced and honored at the football game. They'll have special seating and be announced and honored at the game and on Friday, September 18th, and then that will culminate with the big celebration on Saturday, September 19th, at the Batavia Fine Arts Center. The Hall of Honor display in the main hall will be constructed over the summer, and it will be unveiled that evening at 5:30 for the honorees and their special guests, and then the celebration will move into the Batavia Fine Arts Center for beverages and great hors d'oeuvres, and then we'll move into the, onto the stage for the formal presentation at 7:30 that evening, and then more social time is being planned at Aliano's. Formal invitations are going to be mailed out by July 15th to the honorees and their families and guests, and the many, many supporters of the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence over these thirty years. You're all invited, to put it on your calendars so that you can be a part of this special evening, and the honorees are alumni.
Ken Anderson.
Bob Dahlstrom.
Jim Hanson.
Dan Issel.
Donald E. Kramer.
Robert Peterson.
Jim Roberts.
Craig Sager.
And our honorable mayor, Jeff Shelkey.
And Batavia fireman, Tim Schmitz.
We also have a group designated as BPS staff who have done, have been with the school district for over ten years and have contributed a great amount to the school, and those two are Lisa Palisi.
And Marilyn Robinson, deceased 2010.
And we also have a category for BPS friends, which are people who have not attended our school district but have made significant contributions to the school community, and that includes Wes Hodge, who was deceased in 1999.
And Gene Tyer, deceased 1992. In September, we will again be asking for nominations for the 2016 honorees, which will consist of six alumni, one staff, and one friend. We wanted to make the group bigger this year during this initial launch, and this will be one more wonderful opportunity to show what makes Batavia its schools and its community what a great place it is for all of us. So, thank you for your time and congratulations.
Thank you for putting this together, and certainly, there's a number of people, I'm sure, over the years that will be added to the list, and Batavia's high school is so fortunate to have a number of distinguished alumni in a variety of fields and fronts, and, you know, many of them have provided great service to their city and state and nation, and so I appreciate the good efforts to bring this together, so thank you.
And you can't help but look at the previous presentation and think that fifteen years after graduation, perhaps some of these young men are going to have come forward and done something that their names will be listed as well, so.
I would imagine that's going to be the case, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, item number eight is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. John, did you want to?
Okay, I'm back. But now I'm back as the Batavia Bicycle Commission, and I just wanted to say two quick things. First, I wanted to thank the City Council, the mayor, the police department, the fire department for joining us at Bike to School Day in May, especially Emil Jensen and Randy for all your help, and the wonderful fire department who came out with all their trucks. The fire department also came out to our bike rodeo, which was at Hooverwood School, and it was a very poor turnout. We had more firemen than we did students to teach, but we learned a lesson, and next year, we're going to do it at the fire department on Main Street. So, I just wanted to say a big thank you to all of you. I also wanted to thank you for the bikes that you donated to the bike commission, and we had another big bike giveaway in May. It all spoke up, and that one day alone, we gave out 38 bikes, and our total to date of bikes that we've given out to students, to parents, and other adults in need in Batavia and actually surrounding area is over 120 bikes, and I think we did that in a year. So again, thank you for giving us the bikes, and all Spooked Up has done a tremendous job. They store all the bikes, they repair all the bikes, and everyone comes there to pick one up, so they do a lot of work for us. And Batavia Rotary and Chip in Batavia have donated money to help them, and it's a great program, so thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Now I'll come up. I swear, I really did not plan on talking about the median, but we got some wonderful brochures that I would love to have you take a copy of. It's kind of little, bigger, and then everything you ever wanted to know about raised medians. There's only two of these, though, so I'll just pass them around to anybody I'd love to.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving to item number nine, which is, you got a memo, I believe, from me about Joan Joseph, who has been serving on the Batavia Plan Commission for several years. Her term of office is expiring, and I would like to submit her name for reappointment for a three-year term to the Batavia Plan Commission and ask for a motion of confirmation. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark for the confirmation of the appointment of Joan Joseph to the Batavia Plan Commission. Any discussion? Clerk call to roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
Atech.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Omen.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number 10, which is approval of Class A liquor license for Bulldog Sellers at 1 East Wilson Street. Alderman Stark?
On May 15th, 2015, Chief Shira sent us a memo letting us know that J Keller Corp. and the owner-president, Jason M. Keller, doing business as Bulldog Seller at 1 East Wilson Street, which is currently the rendezvous, might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city of Batavia. The police department found no problems that would preclude J Keller Corp. or Jason Keller from receiving a liquor license as to this date. They have applied for a Class A tavern or Class D restaurant liquor license application, and it was up to the council to decide which fit would be best. The only license class that fits Mr. Keller's intent is Class A tavern license, and so that is the type of liquor license that we will be approving. So I would make a motion that we approve a Class A liquor license for Bulldog Seller at 1 East Wilson Street.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Chansett for the approval of the liquor license Class A for Bulldog Sellers at 1 East Wilson Street. Any discussion? I would just note that we obviously had the prospective owner at the J-Cow meeting, and I think we had a fruitful discussion, and everybody, I think, went away satisfied with his answers and his plans for his business, and so we wish him well in what you're about to, I think, approve here, so. Clerk call to roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Omen.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rusado.
Aye.
Atech.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the Class A liquor license is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent.
Your Honor, the applicant's here.
Would you like to say anything?
I'd like to thank you all for...
Why don't you, would you come up and use them?
You're on TV.
This is on TV, so we're going to have you give your name and address for us.
I'm Jason Keller. My address is 1044 Reserve Drive in Elgin. I appreciate the opportunity for you guys to let me do business in Batavia and the reclassification of liquor licenses. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Best wishes. Okay, moving then to the administrative's report. Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. BATV has issued a press release indicating that because of some electrical upgrades at the high school, their live services on their television channels, as well as the streaming on their website, will be out from this Wednesday through next Sunday, I believe is when that's going to be.
Monday.
Through next Monday. You can still access the archives of past meetings by going to their website, but if there's something that has to be done, it will result in better service ultimately, so people should be aware of that. We should be receiving the 2014 audit in the next few weeks, and you will be bringing that to the Committee of the Whole, as well as publishing it on our website. The staff is undergoing training on the new website, content management, and editing systems. The rollout is still scheduled for sometime in July, as long as all the people who are going to be working on it are comfortable with that. Public Works will be coming to the Committee of the Whole shortly to discuss the purchase of a piece of equipment for the electric utility, which is in our 2016 plan, but we've discovered it has about a 240-day lead time for ordering, so we need to discuss that. This piece of equipment will be something that we will be using for the Colonial Village project, as well as some other things. You'll see an additional summer employee downtown to help Jeff take care of our streetscape, and though we do have this help, we're asking everybody to do their best to help showcase the heart of the city to visitors by using garbage cans and trying to pick up things and keep it looking nice. We've, and as you know, we've completed all the work leading to a recommendation of a candidate to become the Human Resources Director. The, I think that we'll be ready, or hopefully we'll be ready to see some kind of an appointment. We'll be talking about that in closed session tonight and hope to see an appointment on June 15th, at the June 15th City Council meeting, so that's all I have.
Any questions tonight, the city administrator?
Yes, I did.
Alderman Boderman?
Yeah, Bill, I was curious, I received this today that you distributed. I was wondering, you know, in the past, we've asked a couple of times about the minutes from closed sessions and the semi-annual review with July quickly approaching. I was wondering, do we have a date?
We can do that at one of those next meetings.
Okay, so.
Sometime in July, probably in July.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, the administrator? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to committee reports, the community development. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. A few meetings to announce. The Committee of the Whole is going to meet tomorrow evening at 7:30. Couple items that CDC is going to be talking about. One is the land cash discussion with the school district, they'll be here at 7:30, and then the CMAP grant for the river corridor redevelopment. And then, Plan Commission is scheduled, not on this calendar, but it is scheduled to meet this coming Wednesday at 7:30, June 3rd. Couple items on their agenda, they're both public hearings. First one is for 2110 West Main Street, the city of Batavia is the applicant, and it's for amendments to the comprehensive plan use map for general, commercial, and public facilities and institutional to park and open space. And then there is also a public hearing for amendments to the text of the zoning code. Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet June 8th, that's a Monday, at 5:30. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Government Services, Alderman Stark?
We have nothing tomorrow night, but on June 9th, we'll be talking about the code
And then there is also a public hearing for amendments to the text of the zoning code. Historic preservation is scheduled to meet June 8th, that's a Monday, at 5:30. That's all I have, your honor.
Okay. Government Services, Alderman Stark?
We have nothing tomorrow night, but on June 9th, we'll be talking about the code regarding committees. And that's all I have.
Okay. City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Your honor, I have one thing on the agenda tomorrow night. It's a resolution about the preferred alternative from staff's memo on the pedestrian crossing at 31 in Houston.
Okay. And, public utilities? Alderman O'Brien, I guess you've got it now with, we don't have the past chairman here, so you're already ahead of the game here.
Well, on June 9th, next Tuesday night, Cal, we have a water and sewer rate discussion.
Okay, that's a week from tomorrow, not tomorrow.
Right, that is a week from tomorrow, next week.
Okay. Under other business, as I think all of you received a memo from me following the discussion that we had at the J-Cow meeting, I guess it was two weeks ago, about committee appointments. And obviously, everybody serves on all four of the committees, but we wanted, the consensus from the committee discussion that we had at the council meeting was we were going to designate a chairman and a vice chairman to kind of squire the items of business during the committee meeting discussions and at City Council. And so I believe the list I sent you, and I didn't, it got left out of my folder here, so I'm doing this from memory, so please bear with me and correct me if I'm wrong. Under the proposed committee chairman, we would have, under Community Development, Alderman Brown chairman and Alderman Stark vice chairman. Under Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien chairman and Alderman Chantet vice chairman. Under City Services, Alderman Wolf chairman and Alderman Callahan vice chairman. And under Government Services, Alderman Atack chairman and Alderman McFadden vice chairman. And then also, as kind of continuation, Alderman Brown would be appointed the mayor pro temp for a year's period of time. And he then runs the committee, joint committee meetings as we've kind of developed that. I would entertain a motion, I think we should memorialize these and put this into the record, that these are the designated chairman and vice chairman and mayor pro temp. So I'd ask somebody to make the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Brown?
Second.
Second Alderman Stark? Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Searow?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number ten, which is approval of Class A liquor license for Bulldog Sellers at 1 East Wilson Street. Who's got, Alderman Stark?
On May 15th, 2015, Chief Shira sent us a memo letting us know that J. Keller Corp. and the owner-president, Jason M. Keller, doing business as Bulldog Seller at 1 East Wilson Street, which is currently the rendezvous, might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city of Batavia. The police department found no problems that would preclude J. Keller Corp. or Jason Keller from receiving a liquor license as to this date. They have applied for a Class A tavern or Class D one restaurant liquor license application, and it was up to the council to decide which fit would be best. The only licensed class that fits Mr. Keller's intent is Class A tavern license. And so that will, that is the type of liquor license that we will be approving. So I would make a motion that we approve a Class A liquor license for Bulldog Seller at 1 East Wilson Street.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, Second Alderman Chantet for the approval of the liquor license Class A for Bulldog Sellers at 1 East Wilson Street. Any discussion? I would just note that we obviously had these, the prospective owner at the J-Cow meeting, and I think we had a fruitful discussion, and everybody, I think, went away satisfied with his answers and his plans for his business. And so we wish him well in what you're about to, I think, approve here. So Kirk, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Boderman?
Aye.
Searow?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. We'll take just a brief break while we switch tapes and whatever, and we'll resume in executive session.